If you will and enable, if you would, stand for the invocation, remain standing for the pledge to the flag, please.
Dear Lord, as public servants, help us always to be patient and kind. Help us not to be boastful, envious, or proud. Protect us from being rude, self-seeking, and easily angered. Teach us not to keep records of wrong or to delight evil, but show us the benefits of dealing with the truth. Inspire us to spread peace, hope, and preservation in helping citizens in our community and throughout Henry County, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the regular public meeting, Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 PM Tuesday, January 20, 2015, come to the order. We have an agenda as published, and during the final agenda, we left off one thing in the final, so I would like for the board to consider amending the agenda as published, and after the acceptance of the agenda, put in DUI drug court presentation by the Honorable Judge Blunt and Lynn Pollicaro. Having motion District One, Second District Three, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Okay, at this point here, we recognize the Honorable State Court people for a 15-minute presentation.
I don't think it's gonna take 15 minutes.
Good evening.
Maybe less. First of all, we're gonna show you here in a minute, a video that was made here by your people that work for the county and do that, and it is professional grade. Melissa Robinson, Ed Gore, and Kevin Williams all played a very important part of putting this together. Now, there's several of you that have been to a DUI court program, graduation, and seen what goes on, but for the public, I wanted to let those of you that have not been and the public know sort of what we do. The DUI court program is a program designed to help multiple offenders recover from DUI arrests and alcohol problems. It was the first accountability court that has been in Henry County, and we just celebrated our fifth year a couple of weeks ago. It is a minimum of a 52-week program, the people are in the program for a complete year. During that period of time, part of their accountability includes reporting to probation weekly. They report initially to therapy three times a week, and then it goes down to two for an hour and a half session each time that they appear. They have the pleasure of coming to court and seeing me three times a month, weekly, except for the one week that I have jury trials that I can't get them in there to get it to happen like it should. They are scheduled for a drug screen, this is very interesting, because they're scheduled for a drug screen, and it's no wiggle room, I call it, because they go to therapy three times a week, and they're tested each time they go. They go to their probation officer once a week, and they're tested then, then after that, they're tested at least once randomly. So there's no wiggle room. People think that the DUI urine test is just for drugs, but there are two new cutting-edge tests that will pick up alcohol, for the use of alcohol for a period of eight to 10 days, and that has been very helpful to us. We also have a curfew of nine o'clock PM, and we also have a surveillance officer that the sheriff's department has let us have for the last five years, that goes out and checks on these people at night to make sure that they are where they're supposed to be. This program is what is called an accountability program, which means that people are made accountable for what they've done, it's not a slap on the hand. The expenses include a fine of about $1,500 for these people, probation in a year of $576, therapy for the year is $2,080, and the DUI school, which is required by statute, is $300. So that by itself is $4,400 in that year that they pay. How do we pull this together, and what do we do? We have a team that is, we draw from, we have a team coordinator, case manager, we have a lawyer from the solicitor's office, lawyers from defense counsel, therapists, deputies, and probation officers. We meet every week before these people come into the courtroom, I know what they have done or what they have not done. Now, when I first took the bench, there were, and this is good news, there were about 75 DUIs handled in the State Court of Henry County a month, and this last year, it was 46. So that's a good thing. Now, I had been told to press the key, and that's what I'm gonna do, and it's supposed to come up now, and that's all I know about that part. This video is really good, and I hope that you enjoy it, and I hope it starts. I pushed the black key. She won't know if I pushed the right key, and that's what I was told to push. And I apparently did it wrong.
Here comes the, he's too young to remember.
I pushed the black key, I swear.
DUI court program is an intensive program developed for people who have consumed alcohol too many times, usually it's two or three DUIs suddenly, maybe four, five in a lifetime. It's apparent they have a problem. We have, and have had, the last eight years that I have been judge, approximately 75 to 85 DUIs a month that come through Henry County. That's disturbing in and of itself, and quite a few of those are multiple offenders, and that's the group that we give that attention to.
When I first meet these people, usually, they cry. Their whole family's crying, they're in denial, they don't need help, they don't have a problem, and they, why am I doing this? And it's amazing, at the end, I'm usually the one that will shed a tear at graduation instead of them, or along with them, because I see the transformation. And a lot of people say to me, they just need to go to jail, they need to stay in jail, they're drunks, they're, that's all, you know, nothing's gonna help them. But what they fail to understand, it's a daily battle that these people have. Every day is a day that they choose to stay sober, and they actually have to work at it.
I knew I had a problem, but I just didn't really know how to address it. But now going through the therapy and the DUI court, listening to other people's story, it's been real helpful to me. It's been a life-changing experience, actually.
Since I went in the program, it's like, I have pain, but it's not the pain that I had when I physically, because my body now got stronger and it's healing, and I'm progressing every day, which is still in pain, but I don't need no medicine to maintain.
A lot of individuals have made positive changes in their lives and are doing better, and they come back and they tell us, or they call and they say something, and that's always awesome, and it's a great feeling to see people actually transform their lives because of some of the things that we do with the DUI court.
Many people know that they have a problem and just don't know how to get help, don't know where to start, and they don't have the support at home or with their friends, and so DUI court does provide that structure from all of the participants, from the judge to Ms. Pollicaro, from even other participants are there to help them and assist them along the way.
The vicious cycle is lifted from me, and that's a gift all by itself, so I can wake up in the morning and do the things that I need to do, even though there are times that it still crosses my mind, but I've learned to accept that, that it's gonna happen, and I do have the tools now to deal with it.
The program is so intense that it's, I say a lot of times, it's not for wimpy people because it's very difficult to get into the program and to get started. After you get started and you get in a rhythm, in a routine, it generally works out for them pretty well. These folks learn, they are where they are because of what they have done, and now they're simply being made accountable for that.
I just realized that if I didn't have accountability in my life, I would be right back in the same boat that got me here to start with, because every time I said I wasn't gonna drink and drive, I would drink and drive, you know? But having the police come by your house at any given time for a year, and having a nine o'clock curfew, I thought was ridiculous. A grown woman having a curfew at nine o'clock, and the police coming by, it was embarrassment with my neighbors and stuff for a little while, but even then, I kinda just made light of that, and, but it was the accountability and all the requirements in this program that I have, without a doubt, has kept me focused, and it kept me focused on my sobriety.
It's a very intense program, phases one and two, and then once you get to phase three, then it plateaus. So once you're in phase three, then you're only coming to us twice a week, which is still three hours, twice, you know, an hour and a half twice a week, and then you still have the two outside 12-step meetings. But it does, by then, you will have completed a lot of your community service, you will have kinda got a routine, kinda got a structure, you're not new anymore, so you kinda get comfortable, but it's still very structured, and it's still a tough program.
When I first entered this program, I felt like I wished I had a state of jail, because there were so many obligations. I couldn't drive, I couldn't go to work, I didn't have a job, but it still didn't make me wanna go take another drink, because I realized what this drinking had put me through, you know, what this drinking had put me through was the reason why I'm going through what I'm going through with because of the drinking. So I didn't let this program, I didn't let, because the program seemed so hard, I didn't let it discourage me.
A lot of the times, the ones that come in so negatively and just wanna fight it end up becoming the greatest success stories that we have.
We've seen the program help a lot of people, not just the participant, but their families.
We've had several clients who were very reluctant to participate, but after they participated and succeeded in the court, their lives have changed dramatically. They were able to live fulfilling and sober lives without the use of substances, and we have seen how that not only impacts their own individual lives, but their spouses' lives and their entire families.
Had it not been for the DUI court program, we wouldn't be here today as a couple, because he needed the support and the guidance of the program in order to stay straight.
If these people are in the DUI court program, they're not in the Henry County Jail, and if they're not in the Henry County Jail, they're not costing the citizens anything. I don't have an idea of how much money we've saved, but for every day, the sheriff's department says it's somewhere between $25 and $50 for an inmate, and if we save that kind of money, it's a win-win for everybody. So it works. It doesn't work all the time, nothing is 100%, but if we just get one or two, every time we have them graduate, they never drink again, it's a huge success, and if we have four or five that don't drink and drive again, it's also a success. So the program works, we work hard at it, and it pays off for the people that are in the program and for the county.
Everybody's life is like a storybook. Every story got a good beginning, but do their story ends up a good storybook, or do it ends up a bad storybook? And that's where I figure my life is, I'm thanking God that I came through this program and that my life gonna end up being a good story.
We have, in five years, graduated 112, I think, and of that 112, we have a 92% success rate, which I think is outstanding. The success rate is based upon following them for a period of three years, and if they have no more DUIs, then it's considered a success as far as the program goes. Gentlemen, if there's any questions that you have or comments, I want to tell you all how much I appreciate the support that you have given this program over the years, the things that you have done for us. I couldn't have done it without you, couldn't have done it without the solicitor's office. I've got a wonderful team that works with me, and I wanna thank them too, but if there's any questions that you have, I'll do my best to answer them. If I can't answer them, maybe Ms. Pollicaro can, 'cause she's the one that really runs the program, I don't do nothing.
Anybody have any questions or comments? We have a comment here, or question?
Judge, I just, you know, I firsthand, went down there and watched this DUI court, and I was so impressed with what y'all do down there.
Thank you.
And not only is it saving the county money, but you're saving lives, and you're really impacting people's families and that sort of thing in a positive way, and I just wanna thank you.
Well, thank you for those comments. Anything else?
Anybody else?
Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Next, we have a District Four appointment to the zoning advisory board, I'm gonna yield the floor to District Four, he can make the appointment, then I will ask for him to move, to approve a resolution to do such.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Vicki Consiglio to the zoning advisory board.
We have a motion to appoint, his appointee, which would be in fact, to approve the resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners appointing citizens to the Henry County Zoning and Divided Board to have a motion, have a second, District Three, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all in favor, all opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we're gonna have public safety, resolution request and authorization to accept the donation from the Tanger Outlet Center. Major Keith Goins, good evening.
Evening Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Resolution for you is, the merchants down at Tanger, as well as the Tanger Outlet itself, believe that part of their success has been as a result of local law enforcement working hard to create a safe environment in their area. The center would like to show their support for local law enforcement by donating $500 to the Henry County Police Department. This donation does not require any matching funds and does not have any restrictions for the use.
Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book, Board of Commissioners, accept a donation of $500 from the Tanger Outlet Center and its merchants. We have a motion, District Five, Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
You got any more of them? You got any more donations?
If I do, I'll bring them back before you.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution request and authorization to purchase uniforms to the fire department, Chief Lacy, good evening.
Good evening. Before you, you see a resolution for the purchase of uniforms, back in November, the board approved the contract to award our uniform contract, our annual contract, to TNT uniforms, and this is a request for us to expend the funds that are in this year's budget for the purchase of uniforms in the amount of $135,000 for TNT uniforms.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
I've got one. I see on our approval sheet here that we don't have all the signatures from our staff. Did y'all meet about this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a resolution in the book, a resolution to the Board of Commissioners authorizing the fire department to purchase uniforms for the Henry County Fire Department in the amount of $135,000. Have a motion, District Two.
Second.
Second from District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Next, County Manager Budget, we have a resolution request and approval of a budget amendment to the 2014-2015 budget, Andy Sorrow. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Before you have a budget amendment to amend the 14-15 fiscal year budget, the reason that we amend the budget is so that we don't show any variances in the departmental accounts. This budget amendment is to increase the use of fund balance to help the library and de-facts for the remainder of the fiscal year in the total amount of $302,000. This amendment is also combining the Environmental Compliance Department along with the Building Department. Thirdly, we are increasing the Building Department's revenues to offset the positions that we previously gave the Building Department at a previous meeting in the amount of $119,100. I'm looking for the budget amendment to be approved, please.
Does this include funds for the library?
Yes, sir.
How much?
$275,000.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
I just wanted, 'cause I know that we've all been talking in joint effort trying to define that, 'cause we all consider the library as an asset in the county, and I know they, we had some hard times, we were trying to figure out how we were gonna move through this, and I'm just glad that we were able to come to a resolution, and hopefully, I know this doesn't fix all the issues that the library board, I mean, there's, we know there's more need for more resources, but I wanna know that I'm just glad we were able to fill this hole to not have that concern that was out there in the public's eye for so long.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution in Henry County Board of Commissioners to amend the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget, this is the Third Amendment, move to approve from District Two.
Second.
Second, District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Moving down, a resolution request approval of a budget amendment regarding the tax assessor's office, and we're gonna call this 4B in your book, and I do have, I did find a 4B, and I thank you for that. Yes, sir, Mr. Charlie Rader.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're asking for a budget amendment in the amount of $63,207 for this budget year. I'm here representing the Board of Assessors, and Ms. Pam Adaway is with me this evening, she's chairman of our board. This money is needed in this budget year for reclassification of job title to better reflect the responsibilities and required education levels of our appraisers, to help keep staff with experience and knowledge needed to conduct the duties required. The money also includes to finish out a year with an added appraiser for our staff because of the growth that we're starting to receive in residential and commercial is coming up right behind it, and also to take the appropriate managers exempt under FLSA. Therefore, I'm asking approval of this, if you have questions concerning it, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Anybody have any questions, come and have one, I yield a fourth, District Two.
Yes, sir.
Charlie, I just wanted to, you know, 'cause I think it's probably a hard thing for, to be ahead of a group and have to come to us and ask about this, and I wanna just let the public know that you did a great job, I think, of doing your due diligence, you actually did some analysis in the market to see what our surrounding neighbors were doing, and then you provided that information to us, and then you even went so far to kind of sit down with us and, one by one, kinda tell us your concerns, your thoughts. I think a lot of people would be surprised, I'm not surprised, because it's such a skilled position, is that not anybody can be a tax assessor. I mean, if you wanna assess property and do things in our community, there's a skillset, there's training, there's requirements, that it's just not something, if we lose one, we can go just fill that box with somebody else, and I appreciate you educating us as well as sharing that information, 'cause it makes it much easier to know, 'cause this is what generates the revenue, is, you know, if you wanna call, nobody likes taxes, but it is what, you know, contributes a large part to the budget here in the county, and you guys are the arm that helps make that happen. So I just wanted, it makes my job a lot easier when a department head kinda comes to us and fills us in all the gaps of why you need this money, so I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate that, because there is a lot of schooling and testing that go behind the certifications of our appraisers, and these tests are not easy. I know because I helped write the questions a few years ago, and they're not easy.
Sure.
And I appreciate your comments.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book, the Henry County Board of Commissioners to amend the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget, Fourth Amendment as just stated by the chief appraiser.
Move through.
Have a motion, District Two.
Second.
Second, District Three, any further discussion, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, all opposed, so move.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Facilities maintenance, we have a resolution request award, have a bid for a roof replacement for a county building located at 80 Frank Ward Boulevard. Mr. Mike Keeble, good evening.
Good evening. This is a request to award the bid for a roof replacement project located at 80 John Frank Ward Boulevard. A sealed bid request was conducted through the purchasing department and posted on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, ACCG GLGA, for the roof replacement project located at 80 John Frank Ward Boulevard. Seven vendors submitted a bid, as indicated on the attached bid tabulation. Department personnel recommend the award to the lowest bidder, JB's Roofing and Construction of Douglasville, Georgia, in the amount of $10,398. Funds are available in the department's account to complete this project.
Anybody got any questions? If not, somebody move, approve a resolution by the Board of Commissioners, award any bid for roof replacement?
So move.
We have a motion, District Five. Second from District Four, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Resolución request and award of a bid for on-call engineering design service for splash-funded transportation projects, Rocky Romero.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. A request for qualifications for on-call engineering design services was solicited to expedite the procurement process for funded transportation projects. The purchasing department issued a request for qualifications, RFQ number 15-20, for the following categories: intersection improvements including sidewalks, dirt roads, and bridges. A committee of Henry County planning and engineering staff professionals received and reviewed all submitted proposals, and all proposals were scored and ranked. 14 proposals for intersection improvements, including sidewalks, were received and reviewed. The following five most qualified firms were selected: Heathen Lineback Engineer, Inc., Maggie Partners, Inc., Moffett and Nichols, URS Corporation, and Wilberton and Associates, Inc. 16 proposals for dirt roads were received and reviewed, and the following five most qualified firms for dirt roads were selected: American Consulting Professionals LLC, Heathen Lineback Engineers, Inc., Maggie Partners, Inc., RS&amp;H, Inc., and Wilberton and Associates, Inc. 12 proposals for bridges were received and reviewed. The five most qualified firms for bridges were selected: AECom Technical Services, Inc., Arcadia US, Inc., Heathen Lineback Engineers, Inc., Moffett and Nichols, and RS&amp;H. Funding for engineering design services is available in the individual project accounts. Staff recommends approval of the on-call engineering design services for the funded transportation projects as stated above.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir, District Two.
I just was curious, Rocky, I, we, all the commissioners were contacted just recently, this was, that this cut out the largest engineering firm in the county of a lot of things, I mean, are any of these companies local that we're working with? I mean, I mean, I want, to work with the best, but I mean, under one Henry, we try to make sure that we're not, you know, hurting our local businesses too, if...
Right, and I'll defer that to our purchasing director, Rod.
That's what I wanted staff to clarify.
The local, the Henry One initiative, it strictly applies to sealed bids, which would be a low-cost solicitation, and it would be limited to solicitations of $100,000 and below, so these RFPs, RFQs would not be eligible under that provision. And... And this, this process, it, the evaluation committee on this one really put their due diligence in, and they recommended the five highest scored firms in each category, so as far as, I don't feel like any local person...
Can we give a prefer, any, any type of additional weight for local vendors, just so, because it's nice when the money stays within the county for our small business owners.
No, and without a, without a resolution or an amendment to the code, it's difficult for us to do that and to confirm that it's, this a legally defensible program.
Right.
Anybody else have any questions? District Three, didn't you have your hand up?
My question was kind of the same thing that Brian had, and I wanted to ask you, how many local people did put in for this?
I'm not sure of the local presence, I know that we evaluated them strictly on the criteria that we set forth in the RFQ, I can certainly get that information for you, but I don't have that at hand right now.
Well, how many of these people that were selected are Henry County folks?
I'm not sure, I'll have to look.
Rocky, how long is this list?
Good four.
This list is for the designated Splotch project, so it would be for the, for the length of the Splotch.
Entire four.
And just to clarify, this is not a recommend, it's not a rotation, there will be a competitive solicitation process within the shortlist for the category on each project, so it's not like we're just, we say these firms have the work, they're going to have to compete for the work within each category moving forward, so there's still...
But all amongst themselves, is that correct?
Correct.
This list.
But what we did was, what would typically be part of the RFP process, which is vetting the firms on their qualifications, references, and experience, so this allows us to do a lot more in a much more expedited fashion and not leave anything on the table in the vetting process, so Rocky and I worked, we did a lot of work on the front end to make sure this thing was going to work properly for the county, so I don't feel like that, I don't, that there's nothing that's going to be left on the table at this point as far as references and qualifications.
And, Chairman, and maybe I'm just sensitive, I own a small business here in town too, and I know that it just seems like, part of the initiative that Chairman Harper did years ago, which I was so proud of, is that it was, it was the one Henry, where we, because we understand the people who own the businesses here in town that also live here in town, employ people here in town, there's a benefit to that, that you want to have, and I know we have the chamber, you know, chair out there, you know, and director, and those people are the fabric of our community, and I just hate, and that's why I'd love to get Blake's input, because Blake, not to put you on the spot, since you're, you're a brand-new commissioner, but you do have a background in engineering, is this, is this a death sentence for some of our local vendors, or is this just a, am I making a bigger deal out of this than I should be?
No, this is a death sentence, this, this is basically a pre-approved bidders list, as I understand it, and that's how we term it, and all the Splotch Four projects can only be bid by these firms. I know at one point, Arcadis had an office here in Stockbridge, but I don't believe they're local anymore at all, so there, there is no way that a, with this list, no local firms can bid on any work in Henry County.
So any local stimulation goes outside our, outside the county?
It's gone.
Let me suggest this, obviously, we have some issues, and I have some issues as well, how good is the, the bid, is that good for 60 days, 90 days?
Yeah, we still have some time left if, if the Board determines further vetting is required.
I would suggest that somebody might entertain a motion to table this until the February 3rd meeting, and that way, we're not going to hash this out in the public, because it's too many unknowns, so if somebody would move, we table this.
I'll do that.
We have a motion from District Three to table this issue until the February 3rd meeting, and that way, all parties and commissioners can get together outside of a quorum and talk about this.
So we have a motion, we have a second for District One, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I mean, Assistant County Manager, would you be kind enough to make a note of that while I won't forget it on the agenda for the third, please? Thank you so much. Okay, next, planning zoning, we have a public hearing resolution requesting approval of an amendment to the Joint 2030 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use, Mr. Stacy Jordan.
Mr. Chairman, I may skip the setting item for Splotch, letter B.
You think I missed a jail, Dale, didn't you?
He's ahead of you.
Okay, my apologies to the Board, apologies, I got, I got, I was moving fast. Okay, next, I scratched it out, I'm going to unscratch. Resolution question approval of a proposal to furnish and install surveillance and access control for the jail, Mr. John Burke Alter. I should have known if I looked up, you weren't Stacy.
Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. In November 2013, the voters of Henry County approved the Splotch Four referendum, which included funds for the renovations at the Henry County Jail. There's an urgent need to upgrade the surveillance and access control systems in Pod A and B, which are the oldest two pods at the jail, to a digital computer-driven automated system. The sheriff has requested the cameras to be upgraded to ONSSI digital camera equipment, and the access control system to be upgraded to Galaxy Control Systems equipment. ONSSI digital cameras are currently being used with great success at Transit and most recently Judicial Center. The software required to run this equipment was purchased when Transit upgraded their surveillance system and can be expanded to handle any Henry County department that wants to upgrade their own surveillance equipment. With this new surveillance systems, authorized personnel have the ability to view the cameras at any computer terminal, as well as being a crystal-clear digital image, and if the need arises to review recorded footage. Comtech provided a quote of $301,197 to furnish and install all necessary cabling and equipment to upgrade the camera surveillance system and door access control system at the jail. This proposal includes all video server equipment necessary to store up to 60 days of recorded surveillance. Comtech currently has an annual contract for all network cabling for the county, and is the sole provider and installer of both the ONSSI and Galaxy Control System equipment. The Henry County Splotch Department is requesting authorization to use Splotch Four funds to purchase the ONSSI digital cameras and Galaxy Control System for the automated control for the Henry County Jail. The Splotch Department has budgeted the funds for the renovation at the jail in the FY215 budget. If anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution in the book for the Board of Commissioners approving a proposal to furnish and install surveillance and access control equipment for Pod Alpha and Bravo at the Henry County Jail in McDonald, Georgia, using budget to Splotch Four funds. Does somebody move in that direction?
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Two.
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of motion, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move.
Chairman, he knows he's coming. Just give us an update on the senior center in District Two, because I know that my constituents over there in Hampton as well as in District Two always like an update, because I know that process is going to be on the agenda next month, correct?
Yeah, Commissioner, at the next board meeting, February the 3rd, I'll be bringing a resolution to the Board for the award of the Architectural Engineering Services for the senior recenter in Hampton.
Very good, thank you so much.
Any further question? If not, next, this is for real, planning and zoning services. Public hearing resolution question approval of an amendment to the Joint 2030 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, Mr. Stacy Jordan, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Before, before you start, I'm going to read for the record that today we got a constitutional objection to the proposed activity center overlay, which we're fixing to talk about now, and that's just for record, so this will be part of the record, it's that, you know, having said that, thank you.
Yes, sir. On July the 6th of 2010, the Henry County Board of Commissioners approved the Livable Centers Initiative Study for this area in question tonight, and as part of the implementation of that Livable Centers Initiative Study, there are two items on the agenda tonight for the Board to address. The first is an amendment to the county's comprehensive plan, and the second is an amendment to the county's Unified Land Development Code. And this particular hearing is to address the amendment to the comprehensive plan. The first portion of this amendment is a change to the activity centers that are surrounding both the Jonesboro Road exit off of I-75, and the second surrounding the exit off of the Hudson Bridge Equals Landing exit off of I-75. The amendment proposes to change, and actually to remove, these two activity centers and to replace them with a consolidated activity center which conforms to the boundaries of the Livable Centers Initiative Study area. And this is displayed on your overhead. The second aspect of this comprehensive plan amendment addresses the future land use And this amendment is displayed on your overhead. It changes the land use designations within the boundary of the proposed activity center, and it creates a new section for our comprehensive plan that's entitled Mixed Use, and it's designated in, areas designated in purple. And, Mr. Chairman, let me also just state for the record at this time that the comprehensive plan amendment, as well as the Unified Land Development Code amendment, will address properties that are located within an incorporated Henry County and will not include properties that are located within the city of Stockbridge. The third aspect of the comprehensive plan amendment addresses the functional road plan, which typically overlays the future land use map portion of the comprehensive plan, and that is illustrated in your overhead. And so, the major arterials are indicated in orange, and the collectors are indicated in bright green, which is the convention that we have for our functional road plan and the comp plan. And I'd like to point out that there's a new road segment along the west side of I-75 that parallels the interstate between Jonesboro Road and Hudson Bridge Road, which indicates the western parallel connector, and so that's, that's new. Yes?
Is this considered an overlay district?
No, no, the overlay district will be the next hearing, which is an amendment to the Unified Land Development Code.
On top of the LCI, right? Correct?
Yes, yes, this is an amendment to the county's comprehensive plan. So there are those three aspects: the boundaries of the activity center, the future land use map designations within the boundary, and the functional road plan within the boundary.
If I understand this correctly, I think council can explain this better, but I think we're going to approve a resolution of this effect, but all we're going to do is merely to give it back to planning zoning.
Well, eventually, right now, this is, this item is just a modification to your comprehensive plan. You won't do the zoning until later, when it comes time to approve the zoning.
Okay, we don't, we don't send this to them, and they send it back.
This one you don't send down and back, the other...
Okay.
And the next one, the next one has already been heard by the zoning advisory board. That starts at Item C, Item C is the one that you're sending down and will come back. So you can vote on item, you can vote on this item.
Okay, I think we have a question from District Three.
Yes, Stacy, I'm, I'm just wondering, why are we doing this if the property owners don't want us to do this?
I am aware that there is a property owner that is in opposition to the overlay district. I'm not certain that that particular property owner is even in opposition to the item before you at this time.
It's a different item on the agenda, correct?
It's our next item on the agenda.
It's a different item on the agenda.
Yes.
This is the same item.
It is?
Yeah, this is the one I just read for record, constitutionality. How many acres is involved in all this?
That's a great question, it's a rather large activity center, and I'm not aware of the exact acreage at this time.
This company, they're subjecting to, as a matter of fact, I'll just read you this, it said constitutional subjecting to the proposed activity center overlay district ordinance and the consequential...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that objection deals with the zoning action that you're not taking tonight. The way the county's ordinance is set up, anytime you take, anytime you change zoning, you first have to change the comprehensive plan if it doesn't comply to the zoning.
Do you understand this is not appropriate to be filed at this time?
No, that goes with Item C, not with Item A. Your, your comp plan doesn't create the zoning overlay district.
That's what he's talking about, he, he owns 100 acres, this group does, and they adamantly against any zoning without their request.
That's right, and you're not zoning, the comp plan is not zoning.
Okay, but if we approve this, that means later we're going to be considering...
That's right.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
That's right.
Okay, has anybody else got any questions?
Yes, sir.
Stacy, head of District Two, I have reviewed this, and actually, we pulled it off the agenda quite some time ago, and I've been over this thing with a fine tooth comb, and just for the public, so we can understand what, what's going on here, and what we're doing, and what we're trying to do. You know, we talk about growth in the county, and I think we've learned, if you ignore growth and you say it's not going to come, it will come, and it will come in, in the wrong areas, and you can't control it. And so, really what this is, is something that gets the people who want to come and do business here in the county, and the growth that is coming, it puts it in a direction and a place that makes growth good, the kind of growth that we want to see, and the kind of growth that the county needs. It's an area that's a good area, it's down by the highway, everybody can agree that's really, if we want to have businesses, we want to have things like this, that's where they need to go. So, like I say, I've been over this, we'll, we'll get to Item C when we get to Item C, there's some questions I have on it, but for, for this, you know, this is what we need to do in Henry County to keep everything going in the proper direction with our growth. And I think it's important for everybody in, you know, all the citizens to understand what exactly we're trying to do here.
And, and, I like your words, because, you know, when you look around the county, businesses and commercial development, it's all sparse, and this actually puts standards in place, and actually helps to rebrand our county, and also helps to improve the way people see us, so I'm totally on board with this.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, we have a resolution to amend the Henry County City's Joint 2030 Comprehensive Plan to include the Hudson Bridge-Jonesboro Road Connector Activity Center and for other purposes.
Public hearing, you need to open the public hearing.
Public hearing. Okay. At this time, I'll open the floor up for 15 minutes for somebody that's for this or somebody that's against it, I'll give each side 15 minutes. So if you would, state your name and address for the record, please, and tell me whether you're for it or against it.
Eric Johansson, 2180 Satellite Boulevard, Duluth, Georgia, Inland Group, representing Jodico I-75 Associates. We are for this, we are against the next item, but we're for the overlay boundary, we believe that's good. We don't like the application of the boundary on our 100 acres, and we'll talk about that next, so.
Okay. Anybody else like to be heard at this time for it? Anybody like to be heard at this time against it? If not, I'm going to determine that the public hearing portion has met the requirements and is over. Now, if somebody would move in a direction.
I move to approve.
Have a motion from District Four to approve the resolution, have a second from District One, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, no, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we'll have a request for an ordinance amendment to Chapter Four Site Design Standard for Henry County, Stacy, it's you two.
On November the 10th of 2011, the zoning advisory board recommended approval of the proposed Unified Land Development Code Amendment, which is in your exhibit books under this item as appendix, excuse me, Exhibit A. And so, it's a rather extensive ordinance text, which is Section 4.0... And so it's a rather extensive ordinance text, which is Section 4.02.03 and entitled Hudson Bridge Jonesboro Roads Connector Overlay District. And so it provides the regulation for the area that's being designated as an overlay district and the boundaries conform with the boundaries that were established in our last hearing. And so it's a rather extensive ordinance amendment and it includes development regulations, it includes design guidelines for all sites, large sites, minimum, or excuse me, medium-sized sites as well as small sites. So it's a comprehensive zoning ordinance. It includes sidewalk requirements for properties that are developing within the overlay district, bicycle facility requirements, parking requirements, landscaping requirements, and it, it increases the, the development standards for this overlay district. It also includes extensive open space requirements as indicated on the overhead. And Mr. Chairman, with that being said, I would be pleased to answer any questions.
Is everybody in this overlay agreeable to this, to your knowledge?
No. The property owner that just spoke is in opposition to the overlay and to my personal knowledge, that is the only property owner that has submitted a constitutional challenge or has expressed opposition in a written format.
Stacy, what is the percentage of commercial to residential in this LCI?
Within this, within the boundaries of the overlay district, and these are percentages from a couple of years ago, but not a whole lot has changed during the crash, the existing land uses were approximately 30% open space, approximately 27% residential, approximately 42% non-residential and approximately 1% civic uses. The, the target that would be set by the comprehensive plan, which was our last hearing, is 15% open space, so that allows redevelopment, or actually greenfield development, 30% residential, which as far as the, the percentage of acreage goes, you know, it's 30% target versus 20%, 27% existing, 50% non-residential as opposed to the existing 42% and 5% civic. So there's room for development.
Good. What's the op out, options of a property owner?
Yes, sir. There is the option for any property owner to apply to the Board of Commissioners to change the boundaries of the overlay district. And presumably if they wish to opt out, they would request that, that their property be not included within the proposed boundaries of the overlay district. And that's a right of, of each property owner.
So are we forcing this 100 acres in, into this to people that don't want to be in it?
Stacy, where's the 100 acres? Can you show me on the, the map?
The property, it's north of Jodico Road and so it's in this vicinity here.
Okay.
It's on the west side of I-75.
And it's currently zoned C3.
Yes, sir, and there are no conditions that we're aware of. Now, the overlay district does not change the zoning, but it definitely changes the development standards. It increases the development standards for every property within the overlay district. And we understand that the property owner may not wish to conform with the heightened development standards, but we wish to create a uniform set of regulations for every property that was within the boundary of the livable centers initiative study. And so it would treat all property owners within the boundary the same.
Well, Stacy, I, I went over the standards and changed a few things.
Okay.
And I'm in favor of it, the getting everything together and, and keeping everybody together on the same building types is really what we want to see here, so I'm completely in support of this.
What, what did you add to this? You said you changed it.
Um, actually I changed some of the different materials they could use to, for their buildings. I, I believe I removed some stucco I had to go back through and each of the codes, it, it goes on and on and on. Just some of the materials that we could use for building materials, use things that were more high-end.
Is that in this package here, the, the changes?
I don't have the changes in front of me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, what, what you need, if he, if we go as far as through the resolution, he has to put these changes in here to be incorporated.
He worked with staff while they were designing.
The what?
He worked with staff while they were designing.
I, I know, but it's, it's, it's something that he needs to incorporate in, in the resolution to make it binding, wouldn't he?
But it's already in there.
I thought you said it wasn't, because I just asked him.
No, 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 it's in there. I, I worked with them, it's been two months, three months ago.
Oh, it's in there, Stacy.
Okay, I was informed of that, yes.
Okay. Now, answering my question. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, this right here represents a public hearing and we'll give people for or against 15 minutes. If you would, come to the podium, give your name and address and state the opposition or approval.
Eric Johansson, Inland Group, 2180 Satellite Boulevard, Duluth, Georgia. Can I get the 14 minutes and 54 seconds back from the other one? Add it to this and I'm 29 minutes. Hey, just for the record, again, we, we support what you're trying to do. It's a great looking map right there, but you've got to understand our position before I get into these details. Our property's been zoned unconditional C3 going back to the early 70s. There's probably no other constitutional objections on this because everybody else in that boundary benefits from this. We're the only person that does not benefit from this. There's one other property zoned commercial in there and they've already got plats and they've already started work on their property, so some of these standards undermined or standing don't apply to them. So the only person in this room or in that map that applies to is us. Everybody else gets a benefit. They have a residential piece of property, they got an ag piece of property, they got a property on the other side of Jodico Road right now that would be great for commercial development that was not zoned commercial. Now they get all the uses of this ordinance that we've had the ability to do C3 since the 70s. We've been waiting for this 11-lane bridge to happen and now it happens and now we're going to get stuck with a bunch of conditions on here and architectural items that put us at a competitive disadvantage to other people that have similarly zoned piece of properties in, in Henry County. As an example, we could put a big box on that site right now, just like everybody else up and down I-75, and that big box could be built to the standard that the other big boxes are built to. We put it in now, we're going to have as an example, don't get me, a Costco, we'll just say a Walmart, since you have one, with window fenestrations all the way down the side, front and 75, because it's going to look cool, the people passing by, but it's not going to do anything to make the, the development any better. The other thing is, this is putting the cart before the horse. And I want you all to understand, a lot of you are new faces for us, but we've been here since the very first meeting on this. We attended the pizza party, which was the first meeting when we got this kicked out of, or the, the zoning board heard it, but then we had a follow-up meeting here at the county. We were instrumental and a lot of the words that are in here were our words that were put in. Ms. Matthews was there during a lot of that and so was her staff. But the cart before the horse, if you look at that, that's a great looking plan, but what makes that plan work is there's a parallel connector that doesn't exist. You don't have a parallel connector. You have it on Patrick Henry, but you don't have it on this side. So there's an LCI study that was put together to talk about what uses would be good in Henry County and what uses would be good for this corridor, but the LCI study contemplated a road. Well, the road then had a follow-up study done, the parallel connector study, where we sat down with your consultant on numerous condition, or times. They took components of our site plan and they added it to this framework plan and the whole point of that study was so you could get funding through the, through the T-SLOSS bill, which failed. So then we had a follow-up meeting with the county manager at the time, who's now in Snellville, and, and Commissioner Bowman, and we were told, there's no more money. There's no more money for this road, but we'll get a portion of it built down here and we'll start it and maybe 20 years from now it'll, it'll catch up to you guys. Or if you want to go build it, you can make it happen. Well, we're right in the middle of it. Our property starts where Foote Road ends and then it continues on to the power line easement up to the city of Stockbridge. So we are the only commercial piece of property in here that is going to be hindered by this. Everybody else is going to benefit from it. So I want you guys to understand that it's not we're against growth, we're not against quality development, but now we're going to get stuck with added construction costs, added development costs, added things on our piece of property. I can only speak to our 100 acres, that the other properties don't currently have that option to build anything. So for them, this is a plus. For us, it's not a plus. We also were on the, the understanding as we went through all these meetings, and I just read through here on Condition E6, it states differently, that all properties within this boundary are going to have to adhere to these conditions, everybody. It's my understanding that if you wanted to develop just a straight C3 use like we have now, we could develop that straight C3 use. The only time these conditions would kick in is if we wanted to do another use that was not allowed in C3. Now, believe me, there are plenty of uses that, that, that could go on this site as you saw on the framework plan, that, that we can't currently do a C3. We don't object to those. We don't object to getting a different use than we currently are allowed and then having to do the development regulations that go with that. What we do object to is if we wanted to go out and put in a C3 use, or we want to go market our site to a C3 user right now that could go in Henry County, on 75, off of Foote Road and here, that now our price is going to have to be different for them than it would be if they were anywhere outside of that boundary. Now, you may say nobody else is going to come outside of that boundary because they're everywhere, they're in Henry County, but you've got to understand, this has been a C3 unconditionally zoned piece of property, C3 taxes paid going back to the 70s, not ag taxes, not a conservancy, C3 taxes going back to the 70s, and now we're going to get hit not only with the tax bill, but now we're going to get hit with increased development charges and fees that result in architectural standards and changes such as landscaping and bike racks and benches and architectural materials that are different than what, what the standard is out there right now. So, you know, again, we're not opposed to growth in the county. The growth in the county would be great. We spent, I can't tell you how many hours and, and your staff can verify this, we tried to get Foote Road realigned into a manner where it would help start this parkway, but we were too late because the NEPA study had already been done. So we've been, we've been hindered on a site where everybody agrees that this parkway is the contributor to make this better. We couldn't get the parkway realigned because of a NEPA study. I can't get this changed, because you guys are going to prove it tonight, because you took money for an LCI study and one of the requirements of the LCI study was you had to come up with an overlay. This overlay is six years after the fact when the LCI study first happened. I can't change the fact that the parallel parkway is not there, but yet all the development that's proposed in this and proposed in your framework plan is only going to work as if you have a four-lane parkway in there. And without our piece of property, if we opt out, there's no parallel parkway. You got a road that ends right now at Foote Road and you got a road that's going to end at the city of Stockbridge and you're going to have 100 acres that it can't connect through. And we don't want that. We don't want that. We want a four-lane parkway. But we also want to have the ability to develop our property as we can do today and then if we choose to use the elements of this, then those elements will apply to that. So I would like for you all to take some consideration as you approve this on Condition E6 specifically, where it states all properties must adhere to this. It should be all properties that are residentially zoned and not non-commercially zoned and not zoned C3. You know, we're the only one that applies to, so you're not changing this for anybody else. There's nobody else getting a benefit, but we're the most active person in this process from day one. We've been here the whole time, we're not going to go away and this property will continue to develop, so. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. Somebody else like to speak against this particular thing or for?
I am Steve Cash, I'm Executive Director for the Henry Council for Quality Growth. I reside at 2,000 Flat Rock Road, Stockbridge, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good to be here tonight. I don't know if I'm for or against it, but I was, I, I had the privilege to be involved on the study committee when it was first presented five, six years ago. Ate the pizza also and had the opportunity to, to, to represent some of the stakeholders that were a part of this. And this, this was a beautiful thing. It took a lot of time and efforts from a lot of people to put it together. However, my comments or questions might be, since that length of time, do we have the same stakeholders that were involved at that time? Do we have the same landowners? I don't know. That's something we need to check into. And also during those five, six years, standards have changed. Standards have changed. So I think probably it would behoove us, those who are for this, to go forward with it, back in planning and zoning, starting over again. I hate to even say that, but a lot of things have changed in five or six years. So I appreciate what the planning staff did with this and Sherry specifically, and it was a good item at the time. We didn't get our road in, so things changed. Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to be heard at this time? If not, I'm going to conclude, declare that the project segment is over. The only comments I have, I agree. This, this thing has been sitting here, I was executive assistant back many light years ago when all this came down, it was years ago. Is it any way that in a timely manner, it can be revisited and brought up to speed? Or is it something we can do to this 100 acres to open the gap? Is it, I'm just open for suggestions. Otherwise, I'm pretty convinced that if they block that 100 acres, it's kind of like a moot, moot issue on some of this.
Let me just reiterate that when we spoke about the idea of opting out, that the opt-out process would be a request to the Board of Commissioners to, to change the boundaries of the overlay district to, to not include an applicant-subject property. So it would come back before you and it would be up to you to decide if that's a wise thing to do. It's not something that can be done by right.
Stacy, where are we at on the parkway?
Is it? It is in the Transportation Improvement Program for the Atlanta region. It's programmed for 100% local funding.
But does the overlay stop the potential for creating a parkway?
No, no. We have the opportunity for eminent domain if we had the resources to do it.
So it really has no impact on, on a future road?
The land that is along I-75, it would need the access provided by the four-lane parallel connector in order to develop.
And so at that time, when, when the project is ready, it can come back to the board and we can approve that the project can move forward, correct?
And these are for lands that back up to the interstate, for which there's very poor access at this time. But this overlay district, it includes property on Jonesboro Road, it includes property at Jodico Road where the bridge has just been completed, it includes a very large single tract of land to the south of Jodico Road, it includes the, the Speaker's property to the north of Jodico Road, it includes property along Patrick Henry. So there is land that's included that has very good access and since the, these few infrastructure projects are coming to completion, it's time, in a timely manner, to increase our development standards. Because this is the gateway for Henry County.
Yeah, I, I think it's time to bring some continuity and some uniformity to our development. I mean, if you go down many of our corridors, it just, you know, the county just looks, it doesn't look like it was planned out very well. So I think it's time for us to be forward thinkers and, and time for us to start looking at, you know, what we want this county to look like in the future.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution in the book.
I'll be honest with you, looking at this without the parkway. Looking at this without the parkway, I'd actually like an opportunity to speak with that gentleman. I'd recommend, I'd recommend that, just to give us an opportunity to get our ducks in a row.
We have a motion to table it. Have a second, District One. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution to direct planning and zoning staff to amend Chapter Four, Section 4.02.02, Fairview Road Overlay District of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. Dante Gibbs, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The item you have before you is a resolution by Henry County, Georgia, to direct planning and zoning staff to review and amend Chapter Four, Section 4 dot 02 dot 02 of the Fairview Road Overlay District for the purpose of clarifying uses, structures, vested properties, and character area land use map changes, and to also amend Section 12 dot 02 dot 11, which is the requirements for amendments to the ULDC to grant authority to the Planning and Zoning Department staff to initiate ULDC amendments. This request is in part a result of respective property and business owners located within the boundaries of the Fairview Road Overlay District recently expressing concern regarding the provisions of the Overlay District, and is also an effort to streamline the processes involved with making the ULDC, with making ULDC amendments.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, sir, District One.
Okay. This resolution won't affect people, the opportunity of opting out, correct?
Correct. That option is still in Section M.
Basically, we're allowing properties that were grandfathered in the opportunity to do anything they wish on their particular property.
Not anything. It does limit what they can do, but it does grant some permissive uses and expansions on the existing grandfathered property.
I would like to ask Council to explain the opt-out, reason being, if you look at the math, I know that Copart, 77.44 acres, opted out of it, but it's still in the, it's still in the boundaries, and I think legally you can explain to me and others how they can be a part of it, but they're not a part of it.
Well, the boundaries of a zoning district are whatever the boundaries of properties subject to that zoning district are. You know, if there's five houses that are zoned RA and then a commercial piece on the property on the corner, that that commercial is in a commercial zoning district, and the houses are in a residential zoning district. So, what's happened, when you have an overlay district that's this big, is part of the overlay district. If there's a piece of property in the middle that's chopped out, it's not in the overlay district. It's, each-
Okay, so that 77.44 is not restricted, is that correct? Like they were previously-
Well, it does have some restrictions.
They can buy more land around.
Oh, I understand that.
It does have some restrictions, but it won't be-
But I'm talking about the 77.44. They can continue to do-
They can continue to do what they are doing.
Okay.
Presently. There are some restrictions, but it won't have any impact on their current operations.
Co-Part's business at all.
The concern I'd heard, I just want to clarify, if they wanted to put another structure on their 77 acres to expand their business on their 77 acres, if they're opted out, they could do that.
We've been working with, in fact, on the way over tonight, I had a conversation with their lawyer. And keep in mind, what y'all are doing tonight is you're not approving the overlay district. You're instructing staff to take it through the zoning process, so it's going to go to the zoning advisory board and back to you. I don't want to-
They're going to send it back to us.
That's right, and that's a quirk of your ordinance that frankly I think y'all should fix, but we'll do that another time.
Okay, having said that-
But I have, just so y'all know, I did have a conversation with Co-Part's lawyer. There may be one or two small issues with the ordinance as it exists today, but they'll be easy to work out that will satisfy Co-Part.
Okay. So, we have a resolution in the book to direct planning and zoning staff to amend Chapter Four, Section 4.02.02, Fairview Road Overlay District for the purpose of clarifying use, structures, vested property, and character areas, land use map changes, and for the amended Section 12.02.11 requirements for amendments. Somebody move in that direction. Have a motion, District Five?
Second.
Second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, we have a public hearing. Arthur Bevin Jr. from FET requests a modification to zoning conditions for property located at 3359 Jodico Road, Land Lot 25 of the 6th District. The property is located within Commission District Two. Dante, welcome again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The item you have before you is, excuse me, a request to remove all zoning conditions placed on the property. According to the applicant's letter of intent, the zoning conditions have made it difficult to find tenants because of the limited uses allowed. The applicant would like to have all allowable uses that are listed in the Unified Land Development Code as an option for prospective tenants as relates to other conditions placed on their property. The letter of intent does not outline any reasons for not wanting to meet them. The conditions were placed on the property back in approximately 2009 as, in part, with the rezoning, and the planning staff does recommend denial, and I'll put what we recommend on the overhead. We are recommending denial of the applicant's request to remove all zoning conditions, but we are recommending approval of amending condition number three. The property is currently zoned C1, and all C1, we are agreeable to all C1 land uses as outlined in Chapter Two, Table 2.0303 of the ULDC, to be permitted. And at this time, oh, there's one other thing I'd like to mention. The other conditions, they're already met, so it's kind of a moot point to-
Dumpster.
Yes, sir.
Number one.
The dumpster?
Yes, sir.
On that site, I don't believe that's met.
Being placed in a concrete, on a concrete pad, enclosed?
I don't believe it's enclosed.
I will follow up with that and double check.
Please do.
What are we talking about?
The dumpster.
Condition number one.
Condition number one is the dumpster has to be enclosed on three sides by brick, stucco, stone, and-
You said it's already there.
The building is already there, and there's a dumpster on the right side of the building, but I do not believe that the dumpster is enclosed.
Did you get it changed because the dumpster's already there?
No.
No, sir. But I'll follow up with that and double check.
Okay, I got you. Anybody else got any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I'll tell you what, since I know that this is, because this is a public hearing, I'll wait until, let's do the public hearing portion. I want to-
Okay, will the applicant please come forward, please? State your name and address for the record, please. Mr. McFarland.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bruce McFarland, and my address is P.O. Box 3370, McDonough, Georgia, 30253. I'd like to go ahead and clarify, first of all, that we don't have any problems in meeting the requirements of number one, two, and four, which are the ones that we were talking about that have already been performed. And Mr. Prince is correct that the property is not in conformity with the requirements right now. I have advised my client that he needs to bring that up, to the, having a concrete pad and surround it on three sides. The reason we brought this action to begin with is just because there were so many limitations on the property. To give you an idea of what was not allowed, what was excluded, was automobile service stations, bakers, whose entire products are sold at retail on the premises, barber shops, beauty parlors, or similar personal service establishments, catering establishments, confectionery stores, dog and cat grooming and supplies, electric appliance repair shops, grocery, fruit, vegetable, and meat markets, but no killing, eviscerating, skinning, plucking, or smoking of food products permitted, indoor recreation such as bowling alleys, theaters, poolrooms, and electric machines, laundromats, package stores, restaurants, when a part of neighborhood shopping center, taxi office, and nursery schools. My client has had a very difficult time letting the property currently, if you've gone to the property like I believe Mr. Prince has, you'll notice that practically every window has a Realtor sign in it because he doesn't have any tenants. So, we're just asking that you remove that one that was number three in the prior conditions and allow us to have the regular C1 zonings. The planning staff has reviewed the application in light of the nine criteria by which applications are judged. They recommended approval. We're asking you to follow their recommendation. At this time, I'd also like to preserve the applicant's constitutional rights should the request be denied. I'd like to keep the balance of my time if, to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Okay.
Is this site on septic or sewer?
Sewer.
Septic.
I mean, excuse me, it is septic, yes.
It's septic.
Okay. Yeah, and that will, that will limit the number of uses.
Yeah, the concern I have, laundromat on septic.
No, it won't work, but that's something that's handled at a different office as opposed to zoning. We recognize it, that the current septic system will not allow some of the uses that C1 would allow for.
Thank you. This constitutes a public hearing. Would somebody like to speak for or against this consideration by the board? If so, if you would, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Carl Swenson. I've been looking at this overlay project and the restrictions that you continue to try and put on the people and the residents of the county. I'm not certain that the control faction here is going to accomplish what the intent is.
Are you talking about the zoning request?
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
Okay, you're going to get to that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
The zoning, the zoning request, I don't have a problem with that. I believe that the zoning request should be granted because these people should have the right to do with their property as they so desire. I mean, that is one of our constitutional rights. So, this is very important, and all I see is restriction upon restriction being thrown upon these various overlay projects, and that affects the ability of people to bring in new business. It affects the ability of people to sell their properties because they have to make the new people aware of all of these new restrictions. I'm not sure if you have thought through the ramifications of doing all of this involved in the overlay projects, because it's really, I'm hearing from the different people just through this, different people, that they're being sold a bill of goods initially, kind of like a Delphi experiment. They're sold a bill of goods initially.
With all due respect, we're hearing comments for or against this particular-
The zoning, I'm definitely for that, the variance on that zoning. He should be able to go C1. He should be able to go-
Okay, so you're standing up in favor of-
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
In favor of the board.
And that's what staff's actually recommending, too. You'll notice they've actually, this was a very restricted access.
Yeah.
And the staff's recommendation actually is to remove some of those restrictions so that we can work with the applicant to get small businesses in there. So, I think we're saying the same thing.
Maybe, but there's still, you're still leaving in a whole host of restrictions there that may limit their abilities to further develop that property. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you so much. Somebody else like to be heard at this time? Any reason? If not, I'm going to declare that the public segment is completed. So, basically, staff is okay with leaving one, two, and four intact and modifying three to allow anything that would normally fall into C1. Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner, Chairman.
Okay. So, having said that, District Two.
Yeah, I've had a chance to talk to the applicant, too, because we, some of this stuff is even, Representative McFarland said, I call him Bruce, that's why I'm struggling because I'm used to calling him Bruce, but as Bruce even says, under C1, you can't do A anyway, which is the automobile service stations as described. That's typically a C3 classification to do that, so I don't think the applicant's got any problem if that A is listed off because they couldn't do it under C1 anyway. We had, there was concern, this property was under litigation in the past. I think there was some concern by the neighbors that are up against this property. And just to kind of, if you've read the meeting notes of the issues they had in the past, we just wanted to kind of, since there is such residential close by to this area, the other ones that we just had concern about was just the indoor recreation like bowling alleys, theaters, poolrooms, laundromats, just because there's septic, not sewer, so that, I don't think you could do it anyway, package store, taxi service, and then just the nursery. But everything else, we wanted to provide complete access of, under C1. So, that's A, I, J, K, M, N. And Bruce, if you want to respond to that, just if, I don't know if you want to come up and-
I can't really say that my client would consent to that because I haven't spoken with him about it, but I don't think he would have any issue with it. And like you said, some of those uses you're talking about are practically limited anyway.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Otherwise, we have a resolution in the book to approve or deny, but obviously, if you want to approve it, it can be amended to add what needs to be added.
I'll make a motion to- Go with the staff's recommendation to do a denial, but amended for granting everything the staff recommended, which was agreeing to the applicant for one, two, four, and then we'll go amend C1, which is item three, to where they have access to all C1 except for items A, I, J, K, M, N.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a second from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dante. Next, we have approval in the minutes of the November the 4th, 2014 meeting, Exhibit As published, if somebody would-
So move.
Have a motion from District Three, second from District One. Any further discussions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Next, we have an annexation request, City of Stockbridge. We have a lady here that requests annexation for property located at 519 Country Club Drive in Stockbridge, Georgia. And as I understand this, this is kind of like a, something we have to do, but we can't object to it. And I'm looking for, is there a resolution involved in this?
There's no resolution. It's just make you aware of it. There's nothing, your current service delivery strategy agreed.
We don't even have to vote on it, is that correct?
There's no action that was-
This is just for public notice.
That's right.
Okay, so be it. This has been publicly advertised. Technology Service Resolution Question, Officer's Action to Dispose of Surplus Items and Equipment. Mr. Floyd, good evening.
Leading, Mr. Chairman, board members, the proposal you have before you right now is to allow us to sell as scrap or otherwise dispose of about 163 of non-functioning CRT monitors. Other than that, any questions?
We'll pick them up then.
Yeah.
We have a resolution in the book, Request Officer's Action to Dispose of Surplus Items and Equipment. Have a motion, District One?
Second.
Second, District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you, sir.
Next, public comment, citizens that allow to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during the portion of the meeting, and all persons wished to speak for public comment must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must sign your name, address, and specific topic you wish to speak about, or you will not be recognized. You will address the board for five minutes. Now, I've had, in the past, I've had several comments, people wanting to know exactly what a dialogue is. what a dialogue is. I'm gonna tell you that a dialogue is, if a person gets up to speak, they get uninterrupted five minutes to speak. At the end of the five minutes, the commissioner, one of the commissioners doesn't ask the question or make a comment, is while you're standing, then that's a dialogue, so the clock comes off. But if you come up and your five minutes is over and you go back, you're dismissed, then that is not a dialogue if a, if a commissioner makes a comment. Having said that, number one is Mr. Carl Swenson. If you would, approach the podium, state your name, address, and this is affidavit to something.
Yeah. My name is Carl Swenson and I live at 43 Thurman Road. Before I get started on the affidavit, I'd like to mention to you that the CRTs in question that are going to be scrapped, they are now currently considered hazardous material. So, if you are going to dump them, you cannot put them at the dump. They have to be recycled, okay? And that's all I'll say on that. Again, I, I, I keep watching all of the, all of the restrictions that, that come through here that have to do with people's ability to use and enjoy the, the property that they own. And it all comes back down full circle to the same thing that brings me here tonight, and that is the inclusion of this, excuse me, Lord, but God-awful Agenda 21 that keeps introducing itself into the commission meetings here. I told you initially that the inclusion of the Atlanta Regional Authority is by itself another form of government. They are now controlling certain tax dollars. They are an unelected group. That is not in any way, shape, or form compliant with your duties and responsibilities to adhere to the Constitution, okay? And to that end, I'm going to submit the affidavit of truth here along with the charge of treason and sedition against Mr. Tommy Smith here for his refusal to step down from that board. It is another form of government, and we cannot allow this to continue. They're going to continue to grow, they're going to continue to grab power, they're going to continue to take and take until people will no longer want to be anywhere near this region, but they won't have a choice, you see, because this region is designed to suck in all of the people in outlying communities and make a mega-city. Whether you know it or not, that is the intention. Ickley has its fingers in this. Agenda 21 is very real and a part of this. It all comes from the Rio Accords signed by Bush. You guys, if you haven't paid any attention to this, you must, because this is anti, anti-government. This is anti-constitutional republic. So, I'm going to submit this, and I will be following it up with the required documents that need to be submitted in addition to this. I had put forth a requirement that the paperwork stipulating your ability to have the seats you own apparently was misunderstood, I'll grant you that. So, let me make it clear, I need the oath of office for each and every one of the commissioners here. I do not know whether or not your offices are required to be bonded, but if so, I need a copy of the bond. This is for my records. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Mr. Bill Tony, excess spending county manager, commissioner comment at the last meeting. State your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Tony, 1652 Highway 155 North, McDonough, Georgia. I put this piece of paper down. Mr. Moss, when it came down to tariff field, you said, "We didn't pay $17,700,000 for that piece of property. We only paid $2 million." Well, you're not right. I called your office, talked to, excuse me, talked to Mr. Alata.
This right here is what we paid for the airport.
Seventeen million, $700,000. You need to know what you're talking about. Taxpayer money, whether it be federal, state, county, taxpayer money is taxpayer money. And if you don't pay federal and you don't pay state, then you're getting by with something that I don't know anything about. But that's, that's what we pay for that airport. Now, all these properties right here. Mr. Preston, you're an investment guy. Would you recommend any of your clients to put money into anything like this? If they did, what would you recommend them to do with those properties that you couldn't I certainly hope that you wouldn't recommend them to do that. Okay. The golf course, we also had a little discrepancy on that. Okay, the figure down, the figure on repairing that golf course is $497,000. This came out of y'all's office, didn't come from mine. I have the P and L's, which is required from the Swinaker, Swinaker Management. Says he made money in 13, he lost money in 14. Does anybody in their right mind think that as somebody that is, that's smart enough to sell a golf course for $22 million, do you think he's gonna put another half million dollars in it? No way. Okay, moving right along. What I'd like to do is, the county manager, a couple of meetings ago, he said that he didn't waste money, he didn't misappropriate money, he didn't do anything else. When he did his office, he spent on a desk and a... a desk and a credenza, he spent almost $5,000, $4,990.
That's the receipt from him.
Four chairs, $650. Another wingback chair, $760. This, this guy spends more money and it's just like it wasn't nothing. A hutch, $1,775. We can't afford this guy. We need to terminate his contract, send him on his way. Had somebody to send me something. This right here. That's probably a good saying. When I get up here and I talk to you guys, I welcome you to, if you correct me right here, don't wait till I sit down, don't wait till Mr. Smith hits the gavel. I'm right here, I'll have a meeting single with any one of you anytime, and we'll discuss anything you want to talk about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Jennifer Rosenbaum, County Governor.
Good evening, Chairman. Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Rosenbaum. My address is 1521 Lincoln Terrace, McDonough, Georgia. Mr. Prince, welcome. I'm so glad I finally get to speak in front of you, so unfortunately, I did not get to see you last time, so congratulations on winning and welcome to the Commissioners. And I also wanted to start with, I was not here in December, I was on a cruise vacation, had a great time, thanks for asking. But you all voted during that time period on a zoning issue that I worked really hard on this summer, and I just wanted to thank each of the five Commissioners that were here and that did vote in our favor. I do appreciate that, and I do appreciate you listening to the citizens' voices on that. I know that we had a lot of people that were involved in that and a lot of people that were really concerned, so Commissioner Holmes, Preston, Barham, Chairman Smith, and Commissioner Moss, I do appreciate you voting yes on that, unfortunately, you were not here. And then in addition to that, I did want to say that I really appreciated Commissioner Preston's comments tonight about wanting to keep some businesses here locally or working on getting contracts to stay here locally. That's very important for our local businesses, and to, to hear someone on the board speak about those concerns, it is very much appreciated. I do not myself own a small business, but I know a lot of people in this county do, and it's very important, if we're going to keep local businesses here, that we are able to sustain them with any county projects that we may have. Unfortunately, that is about the, just of the good comments that I do have. I do have a couple of other things that I'm concerned about and wanted to address the board with, one of them being that one of the Commissioners, and I will exclude Mr. Holmes from this, and Mr. Prince, because at the time, that, the information was given to me, I know that it was not Mr. Prince from the description, I do not believe Mr. Holmes has a white female daughter. So, the rest of you, however, someone approached me, approached my job, my part-time job at Banana Republic, they researched me on Facebook, and one of your daughters, I don't know who, someone who's old enough to have children, approached a coworker of mine at my job and told them that they were looking for me. I pulled the videotape on that, I have a screenshot of the person who it was, and I'm more than happy to put that out on social media or take that to the news outlet. However, I wanted to confront you all and give you the opportunity that if you know it was you, or if you know it was a family member of yours that approached my job, I just wanted to let you know it's very tacky, it's very unprofessional, and bullying tactics are not the way to get to your citizens. Each and every time I come to this meeting, I give you my address. Most of you, if not, have not already have my email address because I've emailed you on several occasions. The preferred form of contact and the professional form of contact is via email. If you'd like, you can have my cellphone number, or you can approach me when I'm at any of these meetings that I come to regularly. However, sending someone, a member of your family, to my job to threaten and harass me about speaking at these meetings is not a way to reach out to your constituents, and I would ask that you refrain from doing so in the future. Additionally, I wanted to ask, I don't know why this is determined now or if this is something that has been forever changed, but if someone can answer this for me. I noticed that the pop, the public comments this time were at the very end of the meeting. Was this something that was discussed beforehand? Is this something that, I mean, all the meetings I've been to, they've been normally toward the beginning of it, front-loaded, so I'm just asking, was this an executive decision to move the public comments toward the end of the meeting? Mr. Prince, do you happen to know if this was an executive decision to change the public comments at the end of the meeting?
I think not.
Okay. Mr. Smith, do you happen to know?
Yes, I know. I moved it.
You moved it? Okay, okay, go ahead, please.
It, it was, it was creating such a distraction in the beginning of the meeting that I made an administrative decision that I needed to move it. Now, the ordinance or the rules and the policy indicates it needs to be in the front. But it was creating such a distraction that it, it was hindering the lengthy meetings we had, it was hindering the, the train of thought process on the public and also, so we, we gonna hear the public, and somewhere in the, in the near future, we'll probably move it. I will move it back. The board had nothing to do with it.
Right. Now, I just wanted to ask each, each individual...
I am responsible for the conduct of the meetings, and I had to make a decision that it, it was just about getting out of hand from time to time, so I take it on my own to do that. I can put it, I'm, I'm in charge at the moment, maybe short-lived, I'm in charge at the moment now at, on the agenda, so you can blame me for that, but somewhere in the course of time, I'll probably change it back.
So, I would not like to please blame, but rather, I would ask that I can, I guess, a question or concern of mine be made, is that a lot of times when people come to these meetings, they are not able to come and stay the whole time. Fortunately, tonight, I was able to, and I was able to stay long enough to be able to be, get up here and make my comments, but that is not the case for everyone. And so, I would ask if you could take it under consideration to make the public comments back toward the beginning of the meeting, maybe not the first thing right away, but maybe closer to the beginning, so that people who aren't able to stay the whole time do get the opportunity to address you all, because it's very important that the public be able to approach their elected officials and be able to voice their concerns, and these meetings are sometimes the only way we have of doing so. For example, several times, I have emailed every single one of these Commissioners with the exception of Mr. Prince, I have not had the opportunity to do so, and I have received maybe one or two emails back. If I'm not getting emails back from you all, then the only opportunity that I have is to address you all at these meetings. And if I'm unable to stay the entire length, as is, as is any one other constituents, then I'm not gonna get that opportunity. So, while I understand your reasoning, I would ask that you reconsider and that you look into maybe moving the public comments back toward the beginning of the meetings. Finally, the last comment that I just wanted to make, if I'm allowed to do so now that the time has stopped.
Oh, yeah, I responded, so you, you can finish it.
Okay, well, it's just one final thing I wanted to discuss. There's been a lot of movement on social media regarding the proposed local legislation that's coming up this, this legislative session. Fortunately, I have the opportunity to work with the legislators, and I have myself set up appointments to speak with them about this issue, and my concern's on it. One thing I did want to mention is a couple of people, Chairman, are, I guess the murmur is going around that you signed this resolution, so you must be for it, but I wanted to make the contention that did, you, you also voted against the military adoption this year, but you had to sign the milit, the adoption of the military. So, you also voted against this proposed resolution, but you were also, had to sign. Can you make that clear, explain to us or the people in general, why you signed these documents?
Well, it's very, it's very simple. It is the Chairman's responsibility to sign all resolutions. Whether I agree with them or whether I vote for them, it doesn't matter. The Chair is authorized to, by duty, to sign all resolutions, just like the clerk, whether they have any knowledge of anything, and it doesn't matter, they have to attest the signatures. In most cases on a resolution, it's just limited to one. In this case, it had all spots there for signatures, which is kinda out of ordinary, but normally, if it had been a normal resolution, it would only carry one signature, and that would be mine. So, I am authorized to, not authorized, but duty-bound to sign all the resolutions, that's why I signed it, even though I voted no. So, that's real simple there.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the explanation. I just wanted the people, the public, to be able to know that the Chairman's responsible for signing all resolutions that come before him, whether he voted for them or not, just so that it's not manipulated or taken advantage of by other people to say that you were for this, that is why you signed it. And finally, I just wanted to voice my concern that I am wholeheartedly against this local piece of legislation. I will be at the legislator every day this year, and I will do my best to make sure that this does not pass as it was written. I am all for amending the local legislation and fixing our understanding of what the law passed in 1990 was without having to go through the costly, the costly, I guess, expenditure of a trial and a case and everything, but at the same time, the farce of a piece of local legislation that was produced by this board is flat-out ridiculous, and I cannot believe that any, you know, any American would want to give up those executive duties from an elected official and to an appointed official. And I, I don't understand why, I would love to speak with each and every one of you about that, and I would like you to know on the outset that I'm wholeheartedly against this, and I'm more than willing to discuss with you my concerns about it, as well as help you propose amendments to that piece of local legislation. Thank you so much for your time. I hope you all have a great night.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Elton Alexander. If you would, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. And your subject is libraries.
Yes, sir. My name is Elton Alexander, 920 Maple Leaf Drive, McDonough, Georgia. First, I wanted to come and I wanted to speak on the libraries because I wanted to thank County Manager Walker and the Finance Department for finding the additional funds in the budget because we've had much concern on our, because we care Henry County, now with 10,000 followers, about the libraries being unfunded or underfunded. And that's been one of the major concerns, and people are, want to see that because the libraries support our education system, and they want to see the best possible quality and funding given to that institution right off the top. I want to say that tonight, you know, I've come before this board before, challenging you to raise the standard in Henry County and raise the bar. I did that in a previous address. I want to say to you all tonight, we want to continue that as citizens... address. I want to say to you all tonight, we want to continue that as citizens, to raise the bar. Tonight, I was disturbed. I don't think this county has defined what our standard is, and to see property owners and business owners to be able to come to this podium and write the standard of the county, are we going to allow them to do that? Are we going to establish our own standards for this county? We should have our own standards based on using the LCI, based on best practices, based on what's going on in our country and the global economy. We should not allow business owners and property owners to write the code for our county. We should have a standard, and I once and again want to reiterate to you, I want to see that standard raised. What we have right now is woefully lacking. If you open your eyes and you drive through the community, it's woefully inactive. Many of the citizens, we have 200, a population over 200,000. There's no reason that we should be in this position in 2014. Tonight, I saw us punt, once again, punt. That's what we did. When are we going to stand up and take it by the collar and move this county forward? We cannot continue to punt. The proposal was reasonable, that is based on the LCI, that we could go either way on that, but the bottom line is, we have to establish what our standard is. What if we let the Wall Street bankers write the code for the banking industry? What would happen? That's what you were proposing to do. That's what I saw tonight, or that's what I thought I saw tonight. I hope that's not what I saw tonight. We're driving around the county. I see that we have a lot of things that we need to work on. I want to commend our county manager. He is a man among men. For him to sit there month after month and be insulted in ways that are beneath the position that he holds, time after time. We're better than that as citizens. We're better than this as a board. Now, no one's calling on anybody to step on anyone's First Amendment rights, but at the same time, there needs to be a level of civility restored to the proceedings. I just saw someone post, you know, on the overhead cowardly. We're better than that. This community deserves better than that, and I'm calling on you all to raise the standard on that as well. I want to, I do want to echo what Jennifer said about, on one thing, is that each person that comes up here has to give their name and their home address. Well, in this age of social media, I had someone post my home address on social media, because I run a local Facebook page. Now, you have everybody's address on the card right there in front of you. When someone posts their home address out there, this is going out in the TV land. You never know who you're dealing with. And when I had someone post my home address, okay, I was concerned about that. Yes, I was. And that's something that we need to take into consideration as far as what we're doing here. I want to thank Commissioner Preston for identifying Mount Olive Road, that project, during Christmas time, saved me. It's brilliant. It was so simple, but it was just sitting there, dirt road, sitting right in the middle of our commercial corridor, and every time I go over to Henry Town Center, I take it. It was simple, and thank you for identifying that. It was those type projects that affects the citizens' lives right here in Henry County that we look forward to and we challenge you all with.
Thank you. Chairman, Commission comments. I have no comments. Does any Commissioner like to make a comment? They'll be recognized. You do?
I do.
Okay, District Four.
First off, Jennifer, thank you for the positive. Sometimes we focus on the negative, and it's good to hear something positive. I do agree with you. I've been sitting on that side for quite some time, and having to sit through the entire meeting to speak, also, sitting on your side for many, many years, I do understand sometimes you have something to say that's on the agenda that's not a public hearing, so, and I understand why the Chairman made the decision he did, but I do agree with you that sitting through a meeting does get a little old. But part of what I'm going to do at the end of the meetings, I'm actually going to say something positive that's happening here in the county, because I think we hear a lot of negative things. We don't hear a lot of positive things. So just something positive, our risk management director, Vincent Scott, will be featured in an article in the ACCG magazine, and it's a risk management piece. It's going to talk about ergonomics in the workplace, the importance of this, the reduction in claims we have. It's going to save the taxpayers money. Anyway, I'd like to congratulate Vincent Scott for being able to get published in the ACCG magazine, and good job.
Thank you. Anybody else? County Managers report, or you have any comments?
No, sir.
County Attorney comment?
No, sir.
There come in meetings Tuesday, February the 3rd, 9:00 AM, regular meeting. Tuesday, February the 17th, 6:30 for regular meeting. Somebody move the adjourn? Have a motion from District Three. Second, District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. If all opposed, same sign. Thank you. Good night.